Good evening and welcome. I am Angelique Johnson-Dingle, the District Superintendent for Western Suffolk Bosse's, and your moderator for today's virtual public hearing of the Monitor for the Union Free School District. Today's public hearing is on the subject of state authority pertaining to school district governance and interventions. In my role as moderator, I will explain for viewers and participants how this hearing will be conducted, call upon speakers who wish to make comments or ask questions during the public hearing, ensure that public comments that have been received prior to the hearing are entered into the public record, and if time permits, give panelists an opportunity to answer questions that have been submitted. I am joined this evening by Mr. Albert Chase, the Monitor for the Wyandanch Union Free School District, Ms. Gina Talbert, the Acting Superintendent of the Wyandanch District, and Mr. Iris Schwartz, along with a number of other State Education Department invited guests. Our agenda for today's meeting is as follows. I will first explain how this virtual public hearing will be conducted and how people may participate in the hearing. Next, Mr. Chase will do a presentation on state law and regulations regarding school district governance and intervention so that we all can have some common information about this topic. Next, I will provide an opportunity for people who are participating in this public hearing to make comments regarding this topic. We will end with a review of the next steps in the process, which includes the conducting of a second hearing on June 17th pertaining to the fiscal status of the school district. After Mr. Chase has finished his presentation, we will open it up for any questions that have been received by email. Please note that when we get to this part of the meeting, on your team, your microphone will be unmuted and you will be given three minutes to make your statement. When you have 30 seconds remaining in your allotted time, I will inform you. After three minutes, I will thank you for your statement, I will mute your microphone, and I will move on to the next speaker. If anyone did not have an opportunity but would like to submit a comment, you may still do so by sending an email to wyandanchpublichearing1@gmail.com and your comment will be made public as part of record for this hearing. And now it is my pleasure to turn the evening over to Mr. Albert Chase.
Thank you, Angelique, and welcome to all who are participating in tonight's virtual hearing. I am Al Chase, the Monitor assigned by the Commissioner to the Wyandanch School District. I have more than three decades of experience in school district finance and have served as an Assistance Superintendent for Finance for several Long Island school districts. I am very familiar with the fiscal challenges faced by the Wyandanch District. This hearing is being conducted to meet the requirements of a new state law that directs the Commissioner of Education to appoint a monitor to the Wyandanch Union Free School District. The Wyandanch School District is not unique in this regard. Similar provisions of law also require the Commissioner to appoint monitors to the Hempstead and Rochester School Districts. A somewhat different provision of law, and it establishes monitors for the East Ramapo School District. As the Wyandanch Monitor, I am charged with providing oversight, guidance, and technical assistance related to the fiscal policies, practices, programs, and decisions of the school district and its Board of Education and Superintendent. Unlike my colleagues in the other districts I named, I am not responsible for also reviewing the district's academic program. My charge is focused solely on the fiscal issues. Okay, on the next slide.
Six.
The next slide. Okay. On this slide, you can see my main responsibility as a monitor. During my time in office, I will be a member of the Board of Education and will attend all board meetings, but I will not vote on any issues. I will assist the Board to adopt a revised conflict of interest policy based on a model provided by the State Education Department. My core responsibility is to develop a proposed financial plan for the district by no later than November 1st, 2020, for the 2020-21 school year and the four subsequent school years. Then, beginning in the 21-22 school year, I will review the district's budget each year to ensure that the budget is balanced and consistent with the district's financial plan. Next slide. Among the other duties, I will report semiannually to state officials on the fiscal and operational status of the school district. I will assist in resolving any disputes and conflicts between the Superintendent and the Board or among members of the Board of Education themselves. I can also disapprove travel outside of the state, which is paid for by the district. And in addition, I can recommend for vote by the Board cost savings measures, including but not limited to shared service agreements. And finally, I can notify the Board in writing regarding any violations of this policy of the financial plan. And if these are not satisfactorily resolved, I can ask the Commissioner to direct the Board to cease any actions not consistent with the financial plan. The public hearing that we are conducting today is required by state law that established the position of the Monitor. We are doing these hearings this month because by law, those hearings must be done within 60 days of the appointment of the Monitor, myself. And we wanted to do these meetings before the end of the school year. Okay, this first hearing, the purpose of which is to take public comments and answer questions about state laws and regulations pertaining to education law, including the provision of Education Law Section 306 that specifies the conditions under which the Commissioner may remove board members or withhold funds from a school district. A second hearing will be held next Wednesday, again at 7:30, and that will regard the fiscal performance of the school district. So this one is on governance, and next week's will be on fiscal performance. Before we discuss the role of school governance, I'm sorry, it might be worth reminding ourselves that there are three key players in school governance. The first is the Board of Education, then there is the state, and also the federal government. Most of the key decisions about how schools operate are made by local Boards of Education and implemented by the school superintendent. The state and federal governments may also adopt laws and regulations that impact school governance. Often, the federal government does this by requiring states and school districts to take certain actions in exchange for receiving federal funds. As an example, the federal government may require that students be taught by certified teachers as a condition to receive funds. The state, in turn, may set the standards for certifications of teachers. And then, the local Board determines which persons to recruit and hire as teachers, determines the assignment of those teachers, provides these teachers with professional development, evaluates their performance, and ultimately decides whether to issue tenure to teachers. At this hearing, we will focus on the state role in governance and intervention. The next slide. Okay, the authority of the New York State Education Department, the Commissioner of Education, and the Board of Regents derives from state law. Section 101 of the state education law is foundational to this authority and charges the New York State Education Department with the general management and supervision of all public schools and educational work of the state. Section 207 of the Education Law gives the Regents and the Commissioner the power to adopt rules and regulations to carry out state education laws and the functions and duties conferred on the department. Rules and regulations must go through an extensive public comment period before they are permanently adopted, and once adopted, they have the force of law. Currently, the Board of Regents adopts these rules and regulations, and the Commissioner implements them. Section 215, it's the same slide. Education law also provides the State Education Department with the authority to visit, examine, and inspect school districts and their schools. All educational and cultural institutions in New York, including public schools, belong to something called the University of the State of New York, which is not to be confused with the State University of New York. Indeed, all of the colleges and universities in the State University of New York, along with all other institutions of higher education, are part of the University of the State of New York. If you think about the University of the State of New York as all of the organizations and people who are subject to the authority of the State Board of Regents and the Commissioner of Education. The Commissioner of Education serves as President of the University of the State of New York and has much authority under the law. By the way, there are 17 members of the Board of Regents who are appointed by the members of the state legislature to five-year terms. 12 members of the Board of Regents represent specific parts of the state. The Regent for Long Island is someone you may have heard of, Roger Tillis, who was first appointed as a Regent in 2005 and is currently the longest-serving member of the Board of Regents. The Commissioner of Education, in turn, is appointed by the Board of Regents and serves as its pleasure. This is similar to the Board of Education appointing a Superintendent. Key responsibilities of the Commissioner include enforcing laws related to the educational system of the state and executing all educational policies determined by the Board of Regents, having general supervision over all schools, and advising and guiding the school offices of all districts and cities of the state in relation to their duties and the general management of the schools that are under their control. Next slide. Okay. Both federal and state education law, as well as Commissioner's regulations, give the Commission a significant authority and responsibility to oversee a system by which districts and schools are held accountable for academic achievement of students. At the federal level, New York currently receives about $1.8 billion under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, otherwise known as ESEA, to provide services to those groups of students who have traditionally faced the greatest educational challenges, such as low-income students, English language learners, and cost-accelerated youth. In exchange for this funding, New York is expected to differentiate school performance and to identify low-achieving schools for additional supports and additional interventions. Educational Law 211A and Commissioner's Regulation 100.21 are the basis upon which the state meets these federal requirements. In New York, the Commissioner annually determines which district should be targeted for additional support and interventions, as well as which schools should also be targeted. There are two designations for such schools. The first is Comprehensive Support and Improvement Schools are designated because of the performance of all students in the school. And Targeted Support and Improvement Schools are designated because of the performance of specific types of students within a school. Wyandanch has been designated as a target district because two schools within the district have been designated for targeted support and assistance. The Milton L. Olives Middle School has been designated because of the low performance of English language learners. And Wyandanch Memorial High School for the performance of low-income students. These schools are required to develop and implement school comprehensive education plans and receive funding from the State Department to assist in implementing these plans. When school districts have schools that remain low performing year after year, the Commissioner may assign a distinguished educator to that school district. The distinguished educator's authority has some similarities too and some differences from the authority of the Monitor. Both positions result in the appointee becoming an ex-officio member of the school board, conducting an assessment of the school district situation, and writing a report with recommendations. However, the distinguished educator is focused primarily on assisting the district development and implementation of their academic improvement plans, while the Monitor has much more of a focus on the fiscal circumstances of the school district. To date, distinguished educators have been appointed in Buffalo, Hempstead, and Rochester school districts. Another provision of state law pertains to schools that have been struggling with low academic achievement over a period of three years. These schools can be placed into what's referred to as receivership by the Commissioner. Once in receivership, the Superintendent of the District is given special authority that allows the Superintendent to take actions, in some cases, without the permission of the Board of Education and to modify certain aspects of collective bargaining agreements. There are currently 43 schools in receivership in 11 districts throughout the state. Wyandanch does not have any such schools, and therefore is not in receivership. One of the most powerful authorities that the Commissioner has is the ability to remove school officials who have willfully violated or neglected their duty. It should be noted that the standard for removal is extremely high. School Board members are elective representatives of the people, and therefore, only in the most extraordinary cases would be appropriate for the Commissioner, who is not elected, to remove from office a school Board member who is elected. For example, to meet the standards of removal, it must be shown that the person intentionally violated an education law with a wrongful purpose. Indeed, the standard is so high that even criminal conduct by a school officer is not in itself grounds for removal from office. Removal of school offices happens only rarely as the school intends for the voters in the school district to decide who shall be their representatives. The Commissioner may withhold district funds if warranted. The The Commissioner also has a general power and duty to enforce education law. This power is regularly used to require school districts to implement the corrective action plan when districts are not carrying out their responsibilities to provide services to students. These corrective action plans very frequently involve the provision of services to English language learners, students with disabilities, homeless youth, and other educationally challenged groups. That concludes my portion of the presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chase, for that overview of state law and regulation. Now that we have reviewed key provisions of state law that address school governance and interventions, I am going to ask those individuals who have signed up to speak to come forward. Please remember that each speaker will have three minutes to make their statement and/or ask their question. So the first person that I am going to call, and I will ask that you please be patient as we navigate through our participant list, will be Lori Farber. Lori Farber, if you are on the line, can you please identify yourself? And we will allow you to have your three minutes to make your comment.
Okay, that's me. I'm listed as Starflower.
You're listed as Starflower. Well, welcome, Starflower. Thank you for joining us this evening.
My concern is something I just found out recently about transportation issues that the CDC is telling bus companies that by maintaining social distance, it means for a large bus, they can only have 10 people in the bus. There aren't enough buses probably in the whole state to do something like that for every school. And I know we don't know yet what form school is going to take in September, but I'm concerned about the cost and the availability of buses and how the state will be helping school districts like ours.
Thank you so much for your comment, and thank you so much for participating in this evening's public hearing. The next individual that I will call forward to speak is Yvette Crawford. Yvette, if you are on the line with us, please come forward and please make your statement. Okay, I will assume that Ms. Crawford is not on the line with us, and we will move forward to our next guest. And the next guest is Hakeem Alquahir. Hakeem, if you are with us, please come forward and take the three minutes to make your statement, please.
Yes. The next person that we have who would like to make a statement is actually submitted just a comment that will be read, and we will read this into public comment. This comment came from Mr. Monty Chandler, and his comment reads as such: "The Monitor was forced upon the Wyandanch School District because there were assumptions that the Board of Education was negligent in their duties. However, when numerous consultants and experts were hired, all have come to the conclusion that Wyandanch faces a revenue problem and not a management problem. If true, what efforts are being made on the behalf of Mr. Chase, the state imposed Monitor, are being used to raise revenue for the district?"
Yes, I'd like to address that. Again, in Chapter 18 of the Laws of 2020, required that the Commissioner appoint a Monitor to the Wyandanch Schools to provide oversight, guidance, and technical assistance related to the fiscal policies, practices, programs, and decisions of the school district. Under those responsibilities, I will work with the administration to help them ensure that revenues are maximized, that all grants that are available to the district are spent, and that the district seek out additional sources of revenue where at all possible. There may certainly be some grants that the school district is not applying for, and I certainly will assist them in that endeavor to maximize their revenues. I certainly will also be in communication with the State Education Department to see what ideas they may have as far as grants go that the district may be eligible for, and also to speak with state representatives, the state senators and your Assembly person, to see if there are grants available or they could assist us in getting grants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. At this time, this concludes the invitees or the individuals who have come forward and would like to make a statement. Essentially, we have come to the close of our public hearing. We want to thank everyone who participated in today's virtual hearing. Your participation shows your commitment to improving education in the Wyandanch School District. A record of this public hearing will be made available on the Wyandanch School District website, and any answers to any questions that have been received or will continue to be received through the Wyandanch Public Hearing 1.